Commissioner Campbell?
Oh, one second.
Commissioner Ryan?
I'm sorry. Is muted.
Yeah.
And just so the commissioners know when to expect their name, I'm going in order of wards. That gives you an idea. Do I start again, KZ?
Get to the fifth ward. Get to the fifth ward, skip me.
For Commissioner Jewel and Commissioner Ryan, if you want to click star nine, that'll unmute you. Or star six? Oh, yep. I think it's star six.
I usually just hit the microphone icon.
Yeah, you do.
Okay. Yep, Commissioner Ryan, we got you.
So Commissioner Ryan, you were present.
Hello?
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Blower?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here.
Commissioner Jewel?
Here.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson?
I'm here.
And Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. At this time, Attorney Thompson, while you're there, you rescind the bill 1108 regarding revision of the Open Meetings Act?
Yes, thank you. All boards and commissions must adhere to all laws established under the Michigan compiled laws and in accordance with the revisions of the Open Meetings Act adopted in Senate Bill 1108 as passed on October 13th, 2020, and signed into law on October 16th, 2020. A public announcement shall be made by each member who is attending the meeting remotely that he or she is attending the meeting remotely and except for those in military service stating his or her physical location. So if we're all ready, I'll go through the rule again. Commissioner Ryan?
Uh, yes, I'm attending a meeting remotely and I am currently in Flint, Michigan.
Yeah. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, we are at Campbell, attending remotely, city of Flint, Genesee County. Ward three.
Commissioner Blower?
Commissioner Blower, I'm attending remotely from my residence in Flint, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman Wesley, I'm attending the meeting remotely, Genesee County, Flint, Michigan, from my residence.
Thank you. Commissioner Jewel?
Yes, this is Commissioner Jewel, I'm attending remotely from my residence, Flint, Michigan, Genesee County.
Thank you. Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
This is Commissioner Cook Hawkins, I'm attending the meeting remotely from my residence in Flint, Michigan.
Thank you. And Commissioner Sorenson?
Commissioner Sorenson, attending this meeting via remote in Flint, Michigan, Genesee County.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, Commissioner Jordan?
Good evening, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. At this time, is it, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel. I'd like, I'd like to add under reports, status of master plan compliance update, which Suzanne had raised as an issue for us to address at our last meeting. And then, if appropriate, and Commissioner Jordan, I don't know if you were going to address this, to add under old business, status of I-475 project.
Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, not necessarily, not necessarily in addition to the agenda, but if I could get a second to debrief the ZBA meeting before the site plan review regarding SPR 2941.
Okay. You said before the site plan review?
Yes, it's, it's in regards to the site plan review. I just wanted to go over the use variances that came before ZBA.
Okay. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Here and the chair will entertain a motion to accept, to adopt the agenda.
Uh, this is Commissioner Jewel, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as directed.
Any support?
Commissioner Blower, support?
I think I heard Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Blower in support.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, sitting right there, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those have the same right? Any abstentions? Motion to adopt, to adopt the agenda carried. Minutes from November 4th, 2020. Anybody get, anybody get minutes? I know, I think Bill said the minutes were complete, he didn't get them out for November 10th. I'm not sure about November the 4th.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Campbell, he did get them out. They were emailed out at this afternoon. I'm looking at them now.
I, uh, I was looking them by email.
This is Commissioner Jewel, I only received the minutes of November the 4th.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very true.
You know, I don't see mine.
I rec, this is Commissioner Jewel, I received, uh, mine at eight twenty-three this morning.
So did I.
So did Commissioner.
Unless I erased them. I was looking at my phone. Uh, okay.
I can send over, um, the minutes that we have to you, Commissioner Wesley.
If you send them to, uh, send to my email address, it'd be fine.
Okay.
Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chair?
Elizabeth, Elizabeth beat you to it.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Jewel, you were saying something?
Yes, it's my, it's my understanding that the only minutes that we have before us are November the 4th, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
November the 4th minutes? Are there any additions or corrections to the minute?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel. Uh, if you go to page two of the three pages of the November 4th minutes, purely a spelling item, last paragraph, it states Commissioner Jewel commented, and commented is in uppercase, that just needs to be corrected to lowercase.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jewel, what page did you say that was on?
That, that's page two.
Page two, in the last paragraph?
The last paragraph where it says Commissioner Jewel commented. Commented is in uppercase, first letter, it just needs to be corrected to lowercase.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Any other additions or changes to the, I mean, the, the minutes, sorry. Here and the chair will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November 4th, 2020.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November the 4th as corrected.
Do I hear support?
Commissioner Campbell, I accept them.
Commissioner Campbell, does that have a support?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Okay. The mood and properly supported that the minutes of November 4th be accepted. Roll.
Sorry, I was muted, Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blower?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Jewel?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Cook Hawkins?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sorenson?
I'll abstain, I don't have a copy of those minutes.
And Commissioner Jordan?
I'll abstain as well, I was not present.
Okay. Minutes of, uh, November 4th has been approved with two abstentions. Okay. Public forum.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Jewel. Uh, just for the record, I think it's appropriate, um, and you can just determine that as the chair, to move the minutes of November the 10th to our next meeting in December.
Okay. Yeah, the meetings, yeah, the minutes of November 10 will be moved to our next regularly scheduled meeting in December. Okay. Okay. Uh, next is public forum. The public is invited to take part or anything appearing on our agenda this evening. If there's anyone wishing to address the commission, you can do so at this time. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission?
Yes, uh, my name is Martin Bernash, I own Bernash Wrecking. I, I would like to know about, uh, the, the road that somebody wants to acquire that hooks to my property.
Bernash?
Yeah, Form, Form, uh, 20 dash 385.
Uh, Mr. Bernash?
Yes.
20 dash 385, that matter has been postponed. From, and I think this is the second postponement for it. So, I have no information for you at this time.
So that's post, they aren't closing my road off or taking my road away? At this time?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, I gotta, I gotta message.
Time has been postponed for this commission.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson.
Okay. All right, hold on, Mr. Bernash, go ahead, Attorney Thompson.
I would just invite Mr. Bernash to make any comments that he has at this point, and those can, those comments can be preserved for the record if and when that comes back to the commission.
All right.
Okay.
But, Mr. Bernash, if you want to make comment concerning it, you can do so at this time.
Absolutely, if, um, if, uh, city or county is, um, going to sell the road, I'm also interested in it as it, as it hooks right up to my property.
Okay. You said the city or county is going to close the road, you're interested in it, what?
Well, it sounds like, uh, one of my neighbors is trying to purchase the road. And, uh, that's, that's where I come in. If, if the road is abandoned, is, uh, going to be sold, then I have an interest also.
Okay.
The abandoned, the abandoned, it's a very small piece of property. Uh, the last of, uh, St. John Street, what's left? Probably, um, a hundred feet long.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Uh, other than, um, do you want my phone number? Oh, and then, and then also notify me of anything that comes up.
Okay, I guess if you want to make that part of the record, you can.
Uh, definitely, uh, my office phone is eight one zero seven four two nine five hundred.
Okay.
Uh, that's my only interest in, in this tonight is, uh, to be made aware of anything to do with the, touches my property.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel, just calling, uh, regarding, uh, I guess, a point of information. It may be appropriate to direct Mr. Bernash to staff regarding access to abandon, abandonment or vacation, vacating of streets and roads.
Okay.
So, get ahold of them directly?
Yeah, I, you can do that, um. Mr. Vandecook is not in, but you can call the planning office.
If you provide your phone number, I can call you back tomorrow.
I, I have it, I called it three times today and nobody returned a call from 10 o'clock, 1 o'clock, and 3 o'clock, I called.
No one's in the office today, so if you give me your phone number, I can call you back tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, let me give you my cellphone.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be heading out of town, eight one zero five one seven two.
Sorry, you broke up there, could you repeat that?
Eight one zero. Sure, sure, eight one zero.
Uh-huh.
Five one, five one six.
Okay.
Five one seven two.
Okay, I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Great, and who, who am I speaking to?
Sorry, this is Cory Christensen. I'm a planner with the city.
With the city?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thanks, guys. Uh, is there anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else wishing to address the commission? KZ, is anyone else on the line?
We have two phone numbers, seven six one six.
I'm on the line. This is regarding, um, my name is Steve Cusus, I'm an attorney regarding Green Galaxy Med and Green Buddha.
Okay.
Three LLC, I was gonna wait for ours to be called.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's good. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
We have three zero three seven, um, if you would like to click star six.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Okay, KZ, that, that portion of the public forum is now closed. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Blower, was that you for ZBA? For review?
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, just before, just before we started our discussion, I wanted to give a quick review. Um, the Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village, um, which will come before us as a site plan tonight, came before ZBA on October 20th. Um, they were granted a non-use variance for three items. So the non-use variance, um, is, was for the height standard um, of 35 feet and for a variance of 56.6 feet. A non-use variance for the street setback, um, and that was a minimum of 10, and it was variance for 410 for 25. And then the third request was a non-use variance from the city code standard of 25 feet rear yard setback to 11 feet. Um, we also had a discussion, as I'm sure we will tonight, uh, regarding parking and community feedback, it was a lengthy discussion we had with them, but they were granted unanimously their three requests.
Okay. That was, uh, rear yard setback, height variance, and a street?
And the street set, the front street setback, yeah.
Front street, okay. Okay. All right.
Just what, just wanted to share that before we, we heard from the applicant or moved into our discussion.
Very well. Okay. Next item is site plan review. SPR 2941, Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village is requesting a site plan review at 4119 North Saginaw Street, Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Okay, tell us about your, uh, your site plan.
Mr. Chair, this is. Yeah.
Please state your name for the record. And who will be representing?
Okay.
This, um, this process.
This is Doug Scott, Doug Scott from Rogue Professional Services Company. Um, but I also have an ally, and with us tonight, Maryam Rasool from Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village and John Aslan from Aslan McLean Architects. Um, like to have Maryam, just go ahead and give you a little bit of, little overview about Sylvester Broom as well as the, uh, desire for this project, so.
Great, thank you, Doug. So, Mary Russell, I'm the executive director of Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village. Um, we have been a nonprofit youth organization since, uh, 2015. We have, um, 20 different programs that we offer, we, we have, um, athletes, academics, and artists. Those are the three buckets, um, that all of our youth will fit in. Uh, we work with many community partners and we are funded by, um, local foundations as well as, uh, nationwide foundations. And our biggest um, project yet is the sports complex. And, uh, the sports complex, we, uh, received our initial funding from, um, the NFL Detroit Lions Community Impact Grant for a quarter of a million, million, and that's what launched this project. The current project is, um, $10 million and it's 58,000 square feet roughly, and, um, that's us in a nutshell, so. Did you guys have any questions about programming or things like that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is, this is Commissioner Jewel. Uh, it's, is it Mary Ann, did I get that correctly?
It's Mary Yum, but Mary Ann's pretty too.
Oh, Mary Yum, my apologies and so forth. Could you, I had a chance to take a look at the material and so forth, could you, uh, and I appreciated your overview of the program. Could you just walk me through, you know, I show up, I'm there, kind of give me a visual of what would be occurring?
So, a day in the life of a Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village child. So, um, I'm gonna let Coach speak to that, she's the program director, she's on his call, her name is Lanell McKinney. And she can, um, speak to that in more detail.
Yes, are you interested in knowing what's going on now or what will be going on in the sports complex in the new bill?
What, what would be going on in the sports complex? Just take it from, like you're giving me a tour.
Yes, absolutely. So, uh, I'm Lanell Jones McKinney, uh, I'm the program director at Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village. And just a brief description of myself, I'm the first female that came out of Flint to play professional basketball. Uh, traveled all over the world playing professionally because I had the opportunity to develop my, my craft and develop, uh, my game. So, if you can imagine, uh, yourself, you know, imagine yourself as a child, you know, especially here in the city of Flint, not having an opportunity to participate in after-school programs or participate in developmental sports programs. Imagine yourself arriving at this huge state-of-the-art brand-new facility on the north side of Flint where you're used to seeing abandoned homes, you're used to seeing, uh, closed schools where you're not, not, not having the opportunity to, you know, participate in sports, especially in elementary and middle school, and we only have, you only have one high school that you can try out for, and most likely, uh, probably 90% of the students that live in the city of Flint right now will not make that one high school team. So imagine yourself arriving right there in the parking lot and you enter into this facility, and at the beginning, when you first enter into the facility, you'll see the, uh, the foyer, you know, we'll have, of course, we'll have a concession stand, you know, of course, on the other side, we'll have, you know, beautiful area for check-in. Uh, and then you'll see quite a few athletes from all across the country, all across the state of Michigan that are coming, arriving, either participate in a tournament, a basketball tournament, or a football tournament, or a tennis tournament, or a volleyball tournament. You'll see all of these young people, you know, excited about sports and excited about the opportunity to compete again. Because we, here in Flint, we produce more professional athletes in the city of Flint than any city in the history of America, and that hasn't happened in the past 25 years lately. So what you're gonna see now is you're gonna see all of these athletes, and then you go to your right and you'll see the football field. And then you go to your left and you'll see, uh, three state-of-the-art basketball courts where there might be a three-on-three tournament from Gus McRae, or a three-on-three tournament from, uh, the Detroit Pistons that we're gonna host. Uh, or you might see a great volleyball tournament, or a league of young people coming in, or you might see a basketball camp going on, or, or a fitness, uh, a fitness area where the young people will be able to train and become some, some of the best athletes in the country. And then you'll go up in the, um, the mezzanine, and you'll see a robotics program going on from, from Kettering students and Kettering professors that are coming over to partner with us, giving our young people an opportunity, not just to be, uh, involved in just the basic, the, the four, uh, core sports, but now we're talking about giving our young people an opportunity to be trained by some of the best in the world from Kettering University to participate in, in our robotics program. So you're gonna see a place where young people now will be able to dream again. You're gonna see a place where young people will be coming in there to develop. We call ourselves the triple, triple threat, which is academics, athletics, and the arts. So if they, if, if, when, when you walk in there, you're gonna see everything that a child would desire, whether it's baseball, in the, in soccer, football, uh, track. We're gonna give our young people an opportunity in this state-of-the-art facility to be able to dream again, and to see life coming back to the city of Flint. To see the opportunity to become a collegiate athlete, you're gonna see college coaches surrounded, right, you know, by all of these collegiate, uh, um, potential collegiate athletes. You're gonna see excitement back in this community. You're gonna see our young people having the opportunity to dream again. That's what you're gonna see, that's what you're gonna feel, that's what you're gonna sense, that's what you're gonna believe because you're gonna see a, a, a professional athletes being mentoring our young people. Being mentoring our young people, you're gonna see former professional athletes coaching our young people. You're gonna see what Flint used to be, ten times better. Right here at the sports complex, what we're gonna call the Building of Dreams in the city of Flint.
Thank you, Coach.
Uh. Commissioner Joel, did that answer your question? I think you gotta walk through. Okay. All right. Okay. Will we go to, uh? Maryam, would you like to add anything or further comment?
Um, no, I think that was a great summation, um, unless there are any additional questions, we are happy to answer those.
Okay.
And, and Commissioner, this is Doug Scott again, I, I'd be more than happy to go through the site plan, but I know you guys have also had a chance to look at that. So if you'd rather we just answer questions, that's fine too.
Nope, let's go through the site plan.
Okay.
Mister Chair. Hello?
Commissioner Joel, yes.
My apologies, I got muted. I could hear you folks, but I, I wasn't able to respond. I, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you for the overview. And so forth. Casey, could you keep, keep tabs on why I keep getting muted?
Yep.
All right, okay.
Mister Chair.
Yes?
This is Commissioner Campbell.
Yes?
Um, I'm looking at the rendering, can someone explain to me the, the, the Sylvester Broom Center that's there now, is that being torn down? And rebuilt? Because?
It is not.
No.
No.
So I'm looking at the rendering. Um, since I'm, I'm, I live around the corner from Sylvester Broom Center, it looks nothing like it is now. So this, um, entrance area, is that in the back?
Yes, so, so, so what is gonna happen there? If, if this building is gonna stay exactly?
Don, you're breaking up.
I'm sorry, I'm not saying anything, I can't.
Okay, is this better?
Yeah.
So, so the existing building, the existing building is gonna stay right where it's at. Um, and, and if you, if you've been to Sylvester Broom, there, there's parking lots back, um, to, behind the building.
This is the secondary parking lot, Don?
Ye-yes, the, the, uh, there's the two parking lots on, um, on the, the, the main facility there. And, and so they will both be removed. And the new, new building will be basically constructed at, at, on the, uh, west side of the property or, or right next to the park, the existing park that's there. And, and again, it's, it's gonna take up pretty much that whole parking area that's there now. The new parking area will, will be smaller on-site and, and as, as you've seen there. We're also going to have an auxiliary parking area for, for, like, for, for parking tournament, uh, parking as well. And that, that, that auxiliary parking lot will be basically a block south of the facility there. But the new building will be constructed on basically the existing parking lot that, that is there now.
Or it's gonna be on the side of the building?
It's gonna be directly behind the building.
Behind the building. Okay, Dan, so you said the, the auxiliary parking lot would be south of the building? It's two homes, it's housing, it wouldn't be across Damon Street?
It's actually gonna be, it's gonna be one block south of there, so, so that this, it's gonna end up being between, um.
I, I can't hear him.
Okay, Dan, you, when you get back, you're breaking up and you can't be.
Okay, okay.
He's breaking up.
So, 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 so the existing, or the, the auxiliary parking lot is gonna be off of South, or it's North Saginaw between Myrtle. And, um, Edmund Street there. So it's, it's one block south of, of, of the, uh, um, facility there.
Mister Chair, I have a question, this is Commissioner Cochrane.
Okay.
Um, so is this, is this the overflow parking lot that's behind the Broom Center or the entire parking lot that's right there right currently?
It, both of those parking lots will be, um, renovated. Uh, the, the, the overflow parking lot, the building will be directly on top of the overflow parking lot. But the, it will protrude into a portion of what the main parking lot is there now. And as you see on the site plan, that parking lot will get smaller, will only have about, uh, about sixty-four spaces. Um, at, on the site there. Sixty-five spaces, sorry. And, and then we'll have a hundred and forty, one hundred and forty spaces on the, the auxiliary or overflow lot, that's, that's one block south of there.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chair.
So, yes, go ahead.
This is, uh. Can someone explain to me, getting back to this building? Uh, the building is going to, this is the back end or the front end of the building?
I'm not sure which rendering.
You bring up a drawing, Doug, how about you bring up a drawing?
I have rendering one and two.
Okay, just one second.
Cause only, I'm trying to, I know where it is. Because I went to school there when it was Dewey School, so I know where the building is. Now you're telling me that the building is going to be, it's gonna remain the same, but you're gonna put the thing out. Uh, I don't know, what is this, I can't read it. It's, but it's gonna be on the side of the building in the parking lot?
It's going to be behind the building. Um, let me.
Behind the building.
So it's gonna, if I understand, it's gonna back right up to the, to Dewey Park?
The back, back up to Dewey Park and the front, what you're looking at will be facing the current. Parking lot, it's gonna be built in auxiliary parking lot and the front of it. Uh, will be facing the current parking lot that was gonna be shrunk, is that, is that it, Doug?
Yes, and, and I'm going to. Can you see my screen now, hopefully? Are you, are you able to see my screen now?
I can.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So, so, so the existing building, it, it, again, is, is right on South, or North Saginaw, sorry about that. Um, and then. Directly behind that, there, there are two parking, parking lots, one is an overflow, one is their main one. The new building. Will be constructed basically ten foot off the property line and that, that's variances that we, we talked about there. Um, it will be ten foot off the property line and extending toward the new building. In, into the existing parking lot that, that is there now as well. That existing parking lot will be reconstructed in a smaller fashion so that it has basically sixty-five spaces in it. So, so I mean, basically, the existing building will remain and then this new building will, will be constructed on the other half of the, of the property that's there.
So Commissioner Campbell? The new building, the new building will be facing east. That building will be facing east, would be looking toward the existing building.
Correct.
Uh, Doug, my question there, there's a softball field. In the park, there's a basketball diamond and a softball, basketball court and a softball, little soft, look like softball field. This building will. Basically.
Will not.
You have a partial fence. That's right there, that sort of separates. This proposed building from the park, is that right?
That, that, that's correct, everything will remain on the Sylvester Broom property. Uh, and there will be ten, ten feet back, um, fr- from the property line, or eleven feet back from the property line, I guess, on, on the, on that side. And, and, and so, so we won't be impacting the basketball court or the softball courts, or softball field.
Okay.
This, this is Commissioner Ryan.
Go, Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, I heard he say something will be extending to Edward Street and that is the extra parking lot? Am I understanding that correct? And will that be totally separate and just another parking lot?
That, that, that's correct, Commissioner. So, so, so that, that parking lot will be used in, in event that, for tournaments and, and overflow. So when there's, there's a large function there, um, we, we will utilize that hundred and forty spaces there. If you look, we're providing sixty-five spaces on-site and then a hundred and forty spaces down at, at the additional parking facility. And again, the, the six, the sixty-five spaces should be enough for us to, you know, conduct the everyday, um, functions of Sylvester Broom. Uh, with, with the, uh, practice schedules and stuff like that. It's only for tournaments that will be requiring the, the additional parking facility there.
Yeah, my, my question is, I see in your brochure you have tournaments, catering, uh, high school basketball. Two questions, are those? Already programmed or is that's what your hopes are? Because concerning to the parking, that's what that would be used for, correct?
Right. So we are, we currently, hi, this is Maryam Russell, we currently have. The programming with Kettering for the robotics, we currently have that, we currently have fifteen basketball teams. We currently have all of these programs. So with, um, the expansion of this. Sports club, we anticipate having additional teams come and compete with our teams in turn. We plan to have, expand our teams and have more than just fourteen basketball teams. We're, we're gonna have more addition, we're gonna expand our football pro- program, so we're gonna have more football teams. So we want to be able to provide a parking space so that everyone who attends any event at the sportsplex will have, um, a space to park. So that's why we added the additional lot to make sure that we have. Um, ample, ample parking. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Well.
Other questions from the? Commissioner there?
Um, I first wanna say thank you to, to Maryam and to, uh, Lanell and, and for the presentation and the enthusiasm. And I'm really familiar with the work that you do already at Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village and it's, and it's really excellent. Um, so the questions that I have aren't so much about the programming that you have, but, um, kind of the, the nitty-gritty rather. Um, you know, by the book sorts of questions. And so, um, I appreciated the explanation already in terms of the ZBA, um, addressing the setbacks and the building height. Um, um. Here as we have, it does show that the maximum lot coverage is fifty-six point four percent and it says that the maximum allowed by ordinance is fifty percent. So I, uh, just wanted to ask about that and whether that was also addressed by ZBA.
That was, that was not addressed by the ZBA on that, and I, I know that, that honestly didn't, didn't come up at, at, uh, um, in planning review. And, and once we calculated everything, we, we looked at that and, uh, ba- basically, yeah, we, we are slight, slightly over with, with that, uh, um. With, with maximum lot coverage there.
Wait. Doug, you're moving your, uh, your marker, okay?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Hey? Elizabeth, you got another question there?
I guess just the follow-up is, I mean, I, usually when we see site plan that I, I'm not familiar with. Cases where that's exceeded the standard, so is there, this may be a question to staff in terms of. What is the process for, um, addressing that?
And, you know, Cory is not gonna answer. Addressing the questions and Bill is not here because Cory is, as you know, employee of Row. So.
Mister Chair, this is Kelly Thompson.
Yeah, Kelly.
In Bill's absence and because of the situation with Cory, I think what I could offer the commission, um, is just making note of the questions. And if that's something that the commission determines that they want an answer to before they make a decision, then there's obviously the option to postpone. Um, but I, I obviously can't answer the questions for, for planning staff, but that's what I could offer the commission in Bill's absence.
Uh, Commissioner Jordan, your question again was.
So the, the maximum allowed lot, I'm looking at page, um, three of our checklist.
Oh, page three, hold up.
Under different requirements and the very last one at the bottom is for maximum lot coverage percentage. The ordinance standard is a maximum of fifty percent, the proposed plot plan is fifty-six point four percent. And I was just.
Is sixty-four percent over?
Right, right. Have, having not encountered this before on a site plan request that I'm familiar with. I just didn't know even what the options are in terms of how to handle this sort of thing that could have been brought to ZBA to be addressed. Is that something we have latitude to address? You know, what, what's, what's the parameters with that?
Mister Chair.
Uh-oh. Yeah, Cory.
I think I can speak in a generic sense as an answer to that question. Um, if the site plan does not meet the maximum lot coverage percentage, if it exceeds it, it would require a variance. Um, options are. Um, you could require that the applicant go get that variance and then come back to the planning commission. Or alternatively, you could approve on condition that you receive the variance.
I have a point, I have a point I'd like to make, uh, this is Johnny Aslan with Aslan McLean Architectural Group, forty-four eighty-eight West Bristol Road in Flint. Um, well, tonight we're considering, I guess, two lots, I mean, the project is comprised of two lots, the, the parking lot. And, and the lot that currently has the Sylvester Broom Center on. And I think if, if, if you total them together, we'd be less than the fifty percent. I don't know if that's something to think about, but.
Okay, I. We got a couple of. Um. Commissioner Jordan, you have a, another question?
Uh, I guess my only other question is kind of based on the, the parking, excuse me, the auxiliary parking lot. And given that it's a block away, um, whether there's been any thought as to steps to put in place to make sure that it's a, an easy and, and, uh, safe. Traverse between the two places, so for example, in the winter, is there provision for clearing the snow on the sidewalk or things of that sort? That actually encourage people to utilize that designated space as opposed to, you know, lining the streets in the neighborhood back there.
One thing I added, like you said, it is, is one block away, um.
Okay, Doug, you, you're breaking up again.
Okay, I'm sorry, using my microphone works pretty good. Anyways.
Now I can't hear you at all, Doug.
All right, is this better?
Yeah, that's better.
You're right here. Um, I'm using my microphone works well, so. Um, the, the parking lot is a block away, um, there, there is a, a solid sidewalk along North Saginaw Street to, to get, um, to get from one to the other. Uh, we are going to be replacing the, the sidewalk, um, along North Saginaw, uh, in, in front of our, our parking lot. And we are going to be replacing the sidewalks on, on both the side streets there too, just to try and, again, provide a good, um, good, good section of, of sidewalk. Um, looking at the existing sidewalk, um, between there, it's in, in, in fairly, fairly good condition. I know that was one of the requirements that Mister Adis in his review wanted us to look at was the condition of that sidewalk. And it's, it's, it's in decent condition and, and I guess. And, and I guess, you, you know, I would assume that during tournaments and stuff like that, that Sylvester Broom would make provisions for that to be, you, you know, plowed and stuff like that at that point, so.
I, I'd also like to point, point out that in previous discussions with the city that's been raised and we were looking at um, providing crossing guards at, at times when there are tournaments to aid in people getting from one spot to the other.
Yeah, cuz, cuz we, we realize the experience, obviously people, especially coming from out of town, we want them to have a good experience and, and we're gonna do everything that we can to be able to make that a good experience, so.
Okay, Doug, right now, there is no parking lot there, is it?
That's correct.
So that's something that has to come before the Commission also, isn't it?
Well, that is part of the site plan application.
Okay, and so, I'm looking, I was on the site plan. We deal with drainage on the parking lot. Uh, with the barriers from the neighborhood, from the residents?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so
Go ahead, I said I missed that part, but go ahead. I uh, I was looking at it now. I was looking at mine.
Okay, so it's, so yes, so, so, so we do have drainage, we do have drainage planned on that. We do have um, landscaping buffer between the residential and this area here. Um, the, the rest of this, you know, obviously, we're, we're against Saginaw, but we do have landscaping coming up to, to, to buffer. And there, there's an existing fence along there as well. And, and, and ba- basically everything else should be screened by, by the uh, um, but, but the detention pond and stuff there too. The drainage will go to a, to a constructed detention pond and then basically ul- ultimately be detained and, and discharged into the uh, storm sewer there, so.
Other questions from the Commission? Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Campbell. Have the applicant thought about uh, contacting Hamilton Clinic since that's right across the street from the uh, center? That is vacant?
Yeah, so um, a little over a year ago, Hamilton Community um, Health Network sold that lot of land to um, Dr. Miller, Pastor Miller. Um, so now the tr- um, oh, and the name of the church is slipping my mind right now. They're on investment.
They're coming to the church?
Correct. We did approach the church to see if they were willing to sell. Um, and um, we haven't received an answer yet and that was months ago. So I'm assuming that that is a no.
Okay, that would have been perfect.
Yes ma'am, it would have been perfect.
Uh, other questions from the Commission to the applicant?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blauer.
Commissioner Blauer.
Um, to the applicant, can you walk me through kind of just going back to the pedestrian walking both from the acceler- the, the other parking lot? How they would walk into the property and then between the two buildings? Um, what is, is the sidewalk or what would the pedestrian traffic um, flow between the two buildings or onto the property be?
So, so on the main facility there, um, and, and, and Marion can help me out on this as well. But the, the main entrance to Sylvester Broom, the current building is, is, is he, here at the, at the north, north entrance there as well as off of Saginaw where, where the uh, um, ma- there's another main entrance with the bus stop and stuff like that there. So that, that's, that's gonna continue, th- this north entrance is gonna continue to be main entrance. That's why we have the ADA parking there as well. Um, to the proposed building, the, the main entrance is, is, is again going, going to be ba- basically a- at the two, two locations that we're showing here, there's double doors here coming into the, the atrium and stuff. Um, let me go to the floor plan of that for you if I can switch quickly. Are you still seeing it?
No, it disappeared off of mine.
Well, I can see it.
I see it.
How can you guys see it and I can't? Get him KZ, don't let him treat me like this.
Oh, and we can do a, we can do a restart.
Okay.
I got, I got Doug's big face on my screen now.
I'm sorry about that. Sorry for you there, so can you see it now?
There you go, there you go, we've been, we've been working. I got it.
All right, so, so, so we've got the, the two main entrances here and then the main entrance, there's another entrance here for the basketball. Um, course there, but the main entrance is gonna be right here and, and, and right here. And, 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 and those again are, are, are right off the parking lot there as well, so.
Okay.
So following up, I, I think this would go to Marion. Would there be any time that the students would be, um, especially students, but anyone in general using both buildings on like, say, the same afternoon where they would be walking between the two?
Between the buildings, most definitely. They, they, some students, they come for um, support with their homework or they might be in a junior scientist club or they might be in the music program, so they would be walking between the building. Um, but that's just a walk through the parking lot to get to the next be in the street.
But there would be a time that a student would walk from one building across the parking lot into the other building. There's not a designated walkway or a crosswalk of any sort. It's just a kind of walking through the parking lot, is that correct?
No, there would be a walkway. There would be a walkway. There would be, right now we have a walkway in um, parking lot, in existing parking lot, we have a walkway where all pedestrians utilize to get from the building to the main parking lot. It's yellow lines and everything. So, and also, students are not allowed to travel without an adult. Even inside of Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village, students aren't allowed to walk the hallways just by themselves. It's this, it's always a reason and there's always escorts. Um, so that would be the same methodology that we would apply to students walking back and forth. Um, changing classes or anything of that nature. And they would, there would be a designated path. It wouldn't just be like them just walking through the parking lot. That would be um, a challenge. So, yes, I, I respect the question, the question.
So can you show me on the site plan where you either proposed or that is identified on the state plan where that would happen, where the crossing between the two buildings would happen?
Well, I know where the existing crosswalk is. Uh, Doug, do we know where the proposed one would be?
You, you know, honestly, we don't have one show, we don't have one shown on there and it's a very good point. We need to have one shown on there. So, so the site plan does not show one, but we will definitely add one in um, when, when we uh, construct things here, so. And it gen- generally, I guess, just looking at that is probably gonna be coming straight off of coming straight, straight, straight off of, of the uh, entrance here and coming straight across. We've got ADA sp- spacing there that we can easily shift so that we have a, a, an aisle straight across like that, so.
That would be, I'm looking at that. Existing sidewalks, okay. Okay.
Yes, there are existing sidewalks as well.
Yeah, I see, I'm looking those. Okay, other questions from the Commission to the applicant? Any other questions from the Commission to the applicant? I guess we'll go back to uh, the maximum lot coverage percentage. What is the Commission, what is the Commission thoughts?
This is Commissioner Ryan. He had renewed it. Point of information.
Okay, Commissioner Ryan, go ahead.
Is, one question. Between these buildings and exterior parking lot just two blocks away, is there gonna be any kind of uh, additional lighting as or security?
Uh, Doug is there on the site plan? Do you have any place for lighting?
Yeah, yes, there, there, yeah. There, there's actually a, a, a site, site, um, lighting plan for both. Yeah, um, last page. And, and, and there is, there is lighting planned, there is lighting planned for both the, the, the new par- parking lot, the auxiliary parking lot and the uh, the main parking there, so, yeah.
Commissioner Ryan, are you able to uh, unfold your site plan and look at?
Yeah, I, I was talking about between the two areas.
You, you mean the block between them?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there, there, there is currently street lighting on Saginaw, but, but that's, that's basically, there, there is not anything planned at the moment to, to um, you, you, you know, Sylvester Broom would be doing too. Um, number one, it's not our property, so.
Right.
And is there any plans for security between that area?
Yes.
Like for tournaments and that sort of thing, uh, when they u- utilize the second dairy parking lot? Would that be security there?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, would there be security there all the time regardless if it's a tournament or not? Cuz that is, I mean, if the kids coming from Kettering and high schools, I would think they would still need some lighting, proper lighting or security at that area.
The off-site lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, the off-site lot, um, the, there is plans to have lighting on the off-site lot.
They're speaking about security.
Oh, security.
On the off-site lot.
Excuse me, yes, um, the security would secure not only the two buildings but the off-site lot as well, because that would be part of our property.
So on the maximum lot coverage, any discussion from the Commissioners how we should deal with this? Is like six point four, yeah?
Uh, I guess my suggestion, it sounds like the, the procedure for addressing it involves a variance. Um, so one path forward might be to make a conditional approval on receiving such a variance. Any other considerations such as the, this um, pedestrian striping in the parking lot that was mentioned? You know, that that would be, those things could be put together.
Yeah, I think that would, uh, I think the path forward, um, that's a great, great consideration uh, as a conditional part of the approval that they, you know, variance for that six, six point four percent overs there. Um, any other questions from the Commission to the applicant?
Uh, Commissioner Wesley?
Uh, okay, hold up, Commissioner Jewel. Is that Commissioner Dorson?
No, this is, this is Suzanne and I, I can wait till Commissioner, can you hear me?
Well Suzanne, nice of you to chime in. Yeah, I can hear you. Uh, I'll get with uh, I'll come back to you then, uh, Commissioner Jewel?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make a comment that um, uh, the uh, site plan did make reference to landscaping both for the main site and the auxiliary parking lot, so I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay, what's your comment?
My comment was, great job on the landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Suzanne, Miss Woka?
I have a question on just about lighting. This is something that um, we're dealing with. So I, I heard you, Marion, talk about lighting on the off-site parking lot. So is that, is that li- new lighting that you're looking to add um, to this project? And is that something that's gonna be um, under your own grid? How is that, just, this is something we dealt with in the past and we've talked a little bit to the Commissioners about um, street lighting and decorative lighting. Um, so I'm just wondering if, if that's something that you are going to incorporate the lighting into your own power grid? How, how is that going to be addressed?
Well Doug, thank you Suzanne.
Yeah.
That would be a Doug question, but I believe that we would be, it would be our lighting that we would have to
Yeah, yes, but that, that is correct, Marion. Um, ba- ba- basically, we'll, we'll end up hav- having a, for that auxiliary lot, we'll end up having a separate service from Consumers Energy. And, and, and part, part of that is, y- y- you know, looking at, do, do those lights stay on every night? Um, do they only come on when tournaments? And, and tho- those are the type of things that we just need to work through on that. But they would be set up so that they would be dusted on lights and, and they could be, y- y- you know, they could be turned off if it becomes a problem. You know, there's always that dilemma. I- is it better to light a parking lot and have it on all night? Or is it better to uh, shut them off and not entertain the areas? So, we, we, we will be set up to do either one.
Um, that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure that the service um, for the lighting is something that, that you are going to assume and it's not something that becomes a responsibility of the city as has happened in unfortunately, previous projects that um, the city then has the responsibility for. So we've developed a memorandum of understanding, in this case, um, you know, that might be something that would be appropriate for us to, you know, just kind of memorialize this, separate from site plan review. But just as part of the, um, part of the process to make sure that that's recorded, that those lights are recorded. We track them, we have all lights in the city kind of mapped out on a dashboard. So these would be included on that, but then we'd have, you know, kind of a, uh, we'd have an agreement between you and um, between Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village and the City of Flint, just documenting that these lights are under the purview of Sylvester Broom.
Okay. Uh, any other comment uh, directly toward, directed toward the applicant at this time? Hearing none. What is the desire of the Commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Commissioner Campbell? I'd like to make the motion that we approve NPR twenty dash nine four one, Sylvester Broom Empowerment Village, which is requesting a site plan review at forty-one nineteen North Saginaw Street, PID forty-six dash thirty-six dash four twenty-eight dash zero five nine with the condition of a, I believe a conditional variance form of, for the six point four percent leverage.
Mi- um, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel to Commissioner, to Commissioner Campbell. Would you also add to your motion, not only a, a conditional approval of the variance by ZBA? but also, uh, inclusion of the marking of the crosswalk?
Right.
And, and memorandum of, of, uh, of lighting? I can't, that was just discussed.
The memorandum of, uh, would, would, would be the, with the City of Flint, correct? Which would be a separate lighting issue with the City of Flint?
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, correct, but I'm just saying that from our perspective as the planning commission, sometimes things can be said and they're not followed through on. So I'm just saying, saying regards to your motion, that it's being conditional that one, yes, that a variance needs to be approved, that on the site plan there needs to be marking regarding the crosswalk, and that the applicant will enter into an agreement with the city regarding the lighting.
Great.
Yes, I would, I would say yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Jewel.
Do I have to put a motion?
Commissioner Blower, support?
It's been moved and properly supported, SPR twenty-nine four one, Sylvester Broom Center Empowerment Village is requesting a site plan review for forty-one nineteen North Saginaw Street, with the condition that they receive a variance, a conditional use, they receive a variance from ZBA for the six point four uh, overage on the maximum lot coverage from ZBA, along with a memorandum of understanding from the city, uh, the city and the Broom Center regarding lighting and the crosswalk uh, from building to building. I think I got all that in there. Uh, any further comments before I call for the, for the vote? I'd just like to say, I think with, uh, Ms. McKinney on board, this is gonna be a grand success, I mean, her enthusiasm, uh, and the, this facility coming to the north end is going to be fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
Is, uh, any other comments from the commission?
Mission.
Hearing none, roll for approval?
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blower? Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Jewel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook-Hawkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Thorson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Uh, to the applicant, your site plan has been approved, SPR twenty-nine four one. Good luck, and we're looking forward to that coming to the north end of, of Flint, uh, to empower our young folks. So it's been approved at this stage.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Campbell, I would like to commend um, the Sylvester Broom Center for putting this much effort into this project, but also bringing it to the north end. I've been waiting for something for the north end, and finally it's here, so thank you, thank you, thank you, excellent work.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, thank you so much, this means a lot to Flint, means a lot to our young people, and I'm sure is gonna bring so much, so much, so much more to the City of Flint for future generations, and again, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next we have a a case review update from the City of Flint, PC twenty-three eight six and PC twenty-three eight seven. Uh, is this Suzanne?
Hello?
Suzanne?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you, you dropped, I, I didn't hear, um, I didn't.
This is for the case review, uh, update from the City of, City, City Council for PC twenty-three eight six and PC twenty-three eight seven.
Apologize, you, um, the backend of your conversation was cut off, so, um, the two, there's resolutions that require City Council approval for both of those cases. Um, they went last night to set a public hearing um, for City Council approval, City Council establishes the date themselves, but usually they're two meetings away last night, um, so we would expect that to go the end of December. Last night's meeting was adjourned at about ten-thirty, um, without actually getting to any resolution, so, um, it was, I'm sorry, it was recessed until Monday night, so they will be on the agenda for Monday night's, uh, council meeting to set the public hearing most likely for, um, I believe, the meeting date in December, and that's still to be determined, but, um, just because it's the week between Christmas and New Year's, but I think it's December twenty-eighth, um, and that is the date we're expecting the public hearing to actually happen, assuming that the resolutions get approved on Monday night at City Council.
Refresh my memory, what are those two?
Um, it's for the Genesee Health System, the two street vacations, um.
Okay. All right.
Um, and, and I can bring this up now, or I can bring it up under new business, but just as an FYI, also, there's other, there's two other street vacations that are not on this agenda, um, that were approved in July, um, for Applewood Estates, and if you'd like, I can just give you an update under new business, or I can do it now.
Um, you can do it now, go ahead.
Um, I don't have the PC numbers in front of me right now, but, um, you approved two street vacations for Applewood Estates back in, in July, I can't remember if I said June or July, but I think it was July, and those have been, um, those have been on hold for a variety of reasons, but um, they are ready to move forward at this point, and so, um, now, on the agenda this past, um, Wednesday night that was recessed, and they will be on the agenda Monday night, uh, for approval to set a public hearing, that public hearing depending upon when City Council, if City Council has the meeting, um, that I referenced, I think December twenty-eighth, they are not going to go that night, then they will be either moved um, to, it depends on when City Council schedules that meeting, sometimes they have special meetings around Christmas, so it will either be the week before, or they will be, um, the first meeting in January, which I don't have the date in front of me, but it's the second, um, the second Monday in January, um, they will be on the council meeting for, um, for that too, so there, there should be two more street vacations, public hearings coming up, um, the week after, after the December twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay. All right, that's all for the case review, next would be the public hearing. Um, called PC two zero three eight five nine seven six East Wood Street LLC requests a street vacation, and this matter has been postponed. Um, question to the the attorney to Ms. Thompson, isn't this their second postponement? Didn't we say something about uh, when this could come back before us, if at any time?
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask how this was postponed this evening, if it was on the applicant's request or from the commission, and I can go back, I'm looking back through my previous agendas right now to see the last time that it was, that it was on.
So, um.
I think it was in October or something.
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, uh, this is Casey, um, so from the October twenty-seventh meeting, they got postponed, uh, the applicant postponed. Um, and then on November sixteenth, um, Bill received an email from their attorney that they are postponing again, and that would be their second postponement.
Okay.
So it was at, is, is their request?
Yes.
So this is Commissioner Jordan, just a clarification, if my memory serves, we had established the, the policy that applicants could request one postponement.
Right.
After which, um, they would have to reapply if they continue to postpone, correct? And, and my recollection is that we had specifically ensured that staff was going to be communicating to that, that, to the applicant at that time, so at this point they've should have gotten their, their due warning, correct?
Yeah, my understanding is Bill communicated that to the applicant, and they will be applying again.
How could they re- Oh, they're gonna be app- apply again?
Yeah.
Did we set a timeframe for which that can come back for us?
Mr. Chair, I could read that portion of our new bylaws in, into the record if the commission liked, um.
Please do.
Okay. So I'm gonna skip to subsection B, and for the record, this is, uh, article uh, six, section four, and this is on page six of the bylaws.
Yep.
And this is subsection B, so at the very top of page seven. Upon a written timely request, an applicant shall be permitted one postponement of a public hearing. If the request is submitted twenty calendar days or more prior to the scheduled public hearing, no cost will be assessed to the applicant. If the request is submitted seven to nineteen calendar days prior to the scheduled public hearing, the cost of additional public notifications will be assessed to the applicant. Request to postpone six or fewer calendar days prior to the scheduled public hearing will be denied, um, and then request submitted at five PM or later will be deemed submitted the following calendar day. And then, this is subsection C, following a postponement, and unless otherwise agreed to by the applicant and commission, the rescheduled public hearing shall be held within ninety calendar days of the originally scheduled meeting.
Okay.
So that was, the last one was in October, I mean, this is the second postponement, so this would be deemed a, a withdrawal.
Right. Okay. Very good.
And it sounds like Bill made the applicant aware of that.
All right. Okay. Is there anything else for PC twenty-three eight five? Here now, we'll go to PC, the public hearing for PC two zero three eight eight, Green Galaxy Med Incorporated. Uh, Leanne Casey, request a medical marijuana facility change in ownership of Green Galaxy Med Incorporated at four oh eight South Center Road, Flint four eight five oh six, uh, to Green Buddha three.
Buddha.
Buddha? Three LLC. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Uh, my question is, you presented an application as if you were applying for something totally new here. Uh, and it's a whole bunch of stuff I don't think we need, and what we need is not here, I don't think.
Um, I'm not sure what you're asking me here. Steve, are you on the line?
Okay, who am, who am I talking to right now?
This is Leanne Casey.
Leanne Casey, okay.
Yes. Green Buddha is purchasing and making an asset purchase of my business, Green Galaxy Meds. All we are asking for is a change in ownership.
Do we have a sign?
I believe the attorney, Steve Kuasi, is on the line as well.
Yeah, I'm on, this is Steve Cusus, I'm on the line, we did submit a change of ownership, uh, form, and I also spoke to Mr. Vander Cook and provided all the documents that he had requested of me. So if there's something else missing, I also asked, I asked him to, asked him to tell me what else, uh, this was last week, uh, Wednesday or Thursday, and then I also asked him, and I asked, um, Ms. uh, uh, Thompson, if there's anything else that was missing or else was needed, to let me know, and we can supply that. But all we're asking for is that, that we have an asset purchase agreement, uh, Green Buddha is purchasing from Green Galaxy, Green Galaxy is an existing operation, uh, and we are just, uh, doing an asset purchase. There's gonna be no changes to the premises or anything of that nature. I have the property owner here, Flint Center Properties, Alfred Zetuna is a member, he's here, and I also have the representative from Green Buddha, uh, Paul Weisberg. Green Buddha is a pre-quali, is state pre-qualified, um, and, uh, they're here to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Uh, Casey, do you know if they received the the application, the information from the applicant?
Um, I know that Bill is working with Kelly on this one, but I know Bill, um, sent an email of what was required.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I might be able to assist if.
Yeah, Kelly, you wanna jump in?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you what specific information you were looking for.
I'm looking for the oh, I got it, I found it, okay. Change of ownership, I got this part, all right. Is that application signed, uh, let me see if I see a signature on it. There's something here, okay, on the, on the back of the application where it says additional document was required, there's no checks there.
Uh, we submitted all the documents to, uh, Mr. Vander Cook, right, he had me put a merged, uh, um, PDF together, and I emailed everything to him. We had hand-delivered things, and I also sent him a PDF of everything.
Because I'm looking at that's one of the things, I was looking at the change of and I, change of ownership, where it says additional, additional documents required, copy of operation agreement of the applicant, a staffing plan complete with organizational chart. You, you saying you submitted these things to him?
Yes, sir, I submitted everything to him, um, give me one second, I'll tell you what day I did it by email, I think I also put Ms. Thompson on that email as well.
Uh.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I think part of the confusion here is that they were sent in a couple of different batches, and what Bill had requested, I'm sorry, you can hear my dogs. Um, Bill had requested one seamless PDF, so it was all in order, and I think, um, the file size, there was an issue in, in emailing all one PDF, so it came in batches. Um, so, but I'm looking at my
On, uh, Thursday, uh, I sent it to Mr. Vander Cook and, and Kelly, you're on there as well, all in one PDF as requested.
Okay.
So I did, I did comply with that, so he has everything, he wanted photographs, the, the old, everything was sent.
This is Commissioner Jordan, I, I had a very similar question, because I noted that those items those items were not checked on the application that I received either. But it appeared that those items were included in the packet, so I wondered if it was just an oversight with, maybe they didn't get checked. And I know that sometimes when that's happened and we're all face to face, we take a few moments and ask the applicant to check those items off during the meeting. I'm not sure what the virtual version of that is, but I, I guess that that might have been what occurred.
And if there's a way that I can assist and, and pull up something on my screen, or if the applicant can do that, one of, I mean, I can facilitate however possible, um. If there's a, a particular piece of the application that a com, that commission wants to look at, I can try and get that pulled up.
It's the last page on the change of ownership. Get him, boy.
I'm so sorry.
This is Commissioner Jordan again. Um, so, so I, I, I think it's important to ask the, the question about it, but I guess for myself, I would be comfortable with us simply just going through them and verifying that they're in the packet. This part is just a listing of documents that are required. It's, I consider this to be a little bit different than the attestation part from applicants, where we're asking the applicant to actually sign off that they're agreeing to certain things. Um, so for, for the part below it, applica, applicant confirmation, if those things weren't checked, that would indicate the applicant hadn't actually agreed to them. Those things are all checked, so
Right.
I'm comfortable with us just verifying that the additional documents that were required were actually received.
Okay. So Elizabeth, since you have the floor, you wanna go through operation agri, I see, operation agreement, I see that documented in the file.
Yeah, I received that also. Staffing plan with an organizational chart, I believe that was included in one of the pages of the operational plan. Uh, if the applicant is a limited liability company, a copy of the partnership agreement, I think we received a copy of that.
Okay, I got that.
Uh, property owners authorization. I think that was towards the end of the- Floor plans of the medical marijuana facility is previously approved. I believe that we've, we've already got that in the packet, and there's no changes to that.
I see.
Uh, proof, new owners have applied for a background check, I think we have copies of those. And then the locational map with the property outlined.
I got. Yep. Uh, to the, to the commission, did you guys find those things in your packet of information that was sent out to you?
Yeah, I, this is Commissioner Jewel. I, as Commissioner Jordan was reading them, I was going through that in my pack, and in fact, if you look at the end of the packet that you received, uh, the commentary regarding, uh, uh, background checks and locational map, those are actually at, they're actually at the end of the packet that we received.
Right. I got that.
And the other is- Right, and then the others were in the other part.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, we got that cleared up. Other questions or comments from the commission to the applicant? Commissioner Jewel, you wanna go through your-
Well, the, my usual questions.
Yeah.
But the o, the only, I mean, I went through the pack and, and the stuff that was, I had the same question that, uh, Commissioner Jordan had, and you had regarding the checking off on the application form. The, the only other question I had was just, I guess it's just a curiosity in regards to rationale for change in ownership.
Uh, this is Steve Cusus. Um, Mrs. Kizzi, uh, is the sole shareholder of the present company, Green Galaxy, and she's looking to sell. She's looking to get out of the business.
Okay. That, it's, to me, you're doing a business transaction, I just had a curiosity.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions from the commission to the applicant? Any other questions from the commission to the applicant? Okay, here none. Thank you, thanks to the applicant. Discussion?
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. Mr. Chair, I have a question, I believe to staff, maybe to Kelly. Um, on our staff report on page two, there's note about, um, that Green Galaxy Med wasn't on the, the last transfer. Is that an issue moving forward since that is the applicant on this new application?
Yes, this is Kelly Thompson. I'm really glad you asked this question. Um, this is something that Bill and I were discussing last week too. And I would, um, perhaps open this up to the applicant to address, because my understanding is that the original license was issued to an individual. Um, the, the owners, uh, and maybe the, the, um, Ms., Ms. Kizzi on the call now, um, or someone else. But in later applications, like a license renewal, I believe, the applicant was listed as Green Galaxy Incorporated, or Green Galaxy Med Incorporated. So
I can answer.
Okay.
Okay, I can answer that question. Originally, it was Green Bean Company East. When we purchased from the previous owners, they requested that within one year that we, we discontinue using the business name Green Bean Company East. So Green Galaxy Med is a DBA of Green Bean Company East for retail purposes. I've sent, uh, I know, um, Steve sent over the transfer that we did with the state of Michigan, as well as the transfer that we did at the city of Flint. Um, as soon as that happened, uh, last year sometime, I came to the city of Flint, had the transfer done to, uh, change the name. It's still Green Bean Company East, Inc., but we're DBA of Green Galaxy Med.
And Kelly, this is Steve Cusus. Uh, Monday morning at 8:51 AM, I emailed the documentation to you, uh, including the Green Galaxy registration with the city of Flint.
Checking that email right now. And Commissioner Blower, I don't know if that answers your question, but the, what Bill and I ultimately concluded was that there, it was just a different name, but the, um, on, on some of the application forms, um, but the business owner and the, the operation of the business itself hadn't changed, there wasn't a transfer of ownership or, or things like that that was going on, it was just what was listed on the application. Um, so I'm not sure if this answers your question, but that's something that was brought up last week and preparing for today.
Thank you, Kelly, yes. Um, I, I followed that verbally.
Okay.
It seems like it is, um, you know, a legitimate, you know, li, line of progression through it. I'm just making sure that, you know, legally and consistently, we're looking at it, you know, between the two applications, if there needs to be some sort of, you know, maybe we accept, we put into record, um, the document that they said they had sent over, something, something to kind of connect the pieces, uh, for a later date.
Certainly, yes. I can, I'll share this email with Bill, I can make it available to the commissioners, I'm, I'm looking at the email from their attorney right now. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, and Chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Chair?
Yes. Oh, I forgot.
Yeah.
I am so sorry. This is a public hearing, isn't it? Is there anyone?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the public wishing to oppose the transfer of ownership of PC 20388 Green Galaxy Med Incorporated? Leanne Kin, Kinzie? Kizzi?
Kizzi.
Kizzi?
Kizzi.
Request, request a medical marijuana facility change of ownership of Green Galaxy Med Incorporated at 408 South Center Road, Flint, Michigan, 48506 to Green, say it again for me, please.
Buddha.
Buddha.
Buddha. Uh, Third LLC. Is there anyone wishing to oppose the transfer? Is anyone wishing to oppose the transfer? Casey, we have any callers on the line?
We do have one, Indian5909.
Yes, the, I, I represent the owner of the property, this is Alfred Zaituna.
Oh.
Okay. I'm taking, you don't oppose that, right?
No, I definitely do not.
Okay. Uh, anyone wishing to oppose? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to any, anyone wishing to approve, speak in favor, anyone wishing to speak in favor of PC 20388 Green Galaxy Med? Change of, uh, ownership to Green Buddha 3 LLC. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Casey, is any other, anyone else on the line?
No, that is all.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. What is the desire of the commission?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel, I'd just like to, uh, ask my normal question, I guess I'll direct it to Kelly, um, or to staff, has, have we received any other communications, emails, or phone calls regarding, uh, this public hearing?
None have been submitted to planning staff.
Okay, thank you.
Um, what is the desire of the commission?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Blower?
I move approval of PC 20388 Green Galaxy Med, Inc. Leanne, Leanne Kizzi's request, a medical marijuana facility change in ownership of Green Galaxy Med, Inc. at 408 South Center Road, Flint, Michigan, 48506, to Green Buddha 3 LLC.
Do I hear support for the motion?
I'll support that motion, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blower?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Jewel?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook-Hawkins?
April, are you muted?
No, um, Suzanne disconnected.
Yeah.
Um, but Suzanne didn't say, um, that she's trying to connect back.
Okay, I'll, I'll circle back to her. Uh, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Checking my participant list, I don't see her on here.
Uh, you don't see Commissioner Kill-Cockins?
I don't see her on the participant list for the meeting. So, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Yes, she was.
We can give it a couple of minutes as the vote stands right now, Mr. Chair, one, two, three, seven yes, and we're just waiting on Commissioner Cook-Hawkins.
Um, this is Suzanne. Her phone, her phone died, and she, um, she said that she was going to try to connect via laptop, and, uh, I sent her the Zoom information, but I haven't seen that she's responded to it yet, so I don't think she's back in, but this was probably over ten minutes ago. So I think she's having technical difficulties.
Yep, let's move on. Uh, we have a, we have a seven and a phone disconnect. It, 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 uh, your request for a name change has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just, uh, just, just for the record, approval of ownership change, correct?
Approved ownership change, correct.
Yes, thank you so much.
Uh. Next, next item, I didn't, is reports.
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson.
Yep.
Yes, um, I've been working with, um, Suzanne and our Chief Legal Officer, Angela Wheeler. Uh, Angela emailed, uh, council staff last week and requested that the permanent marijuana ordinance be added back onto their agenda. And, um, we are hoping to get that on their agenda sometime in December. Given the delays and the remote meetings and, and things related to the pandemic, it might be January, but, um, we are really, um, trying to push that forward for a second reading and a vote.
Okay. Um. Any questions from the commission to Attorney Thompson? No? Thank you. Uh, Suzanne? So Wilcox, uh, status of the zoning ordinance and capital improvement plan?
Um, the zoning ordinance is, um, we have that on our radar, and we are actually scheduling to, we're, we're aiming for December, but most likely because of the holidays and rescheduled meetings, um, it will mostly be, it will most likely be in this, in January. So we are working on formatting that document right now, and we've also started, uh, or will be starting next Thursday, um, meetings with staff, um, our new planner, uh, Bill, Cory, myself, and Kelly Thompson will be meeting weekly to review, um, the draft zoning code to get us all familiar with it, ready to move it to council, and, um, we've had conversations with Angela, the Chief Legal Officer, about that process, and we will be presenting that, um, in, in Jan. We're shooting for December, but I, I will say it will probably go in January, but we are expecting that to happen, uh, very soon, so there has been progress made on that. And, um, we may be calling on, on particularly Commissioner Jordan, um, and any others who want to help, just because the five of us that, um, are going to be moving this forward are five people who have not, or were not present at the time the zone, the draft zoning code was adopted. So, um, we are trying to familiarize ourselves with it so that we can speak intelligently about it at council, and, um, it is moving forward.
Okay.
And then the capital improvement plan, um, we have developed a timeline for the capital improvement plan. Jeffrey, um, Schiffman is on this call, and he is actually leading that, so it's awesome having a lead planner, um, on board again. This is, uh, one of his main work activities right now. Um, we have, uh, heard from Eric Scorsoni, who has identified an intern in the finance department, he is on board with our- in the finance department. He is on board with our plan to, and supports the plan to have the capital improvement plan completed in the fashion that it was done, last done, I think in 2018, so that we can, uh, collect all the information that we need to collect from the various departments. Finance is going to be reinforcing that and helping us make sure that we get that information. Um, we are, the intern that the finance department has on staff started last Friday, I'm sorry, started last week and Friday, um, Eric was, uh, going to give us a name of who, which, there are three interns actually in finance, but which one of those three would be working closely with Jeffrey on the capital improvement plan? And, um, we, as we said, we did, we did look at the timeline, um, that existed. It is consistent with the last capital improvement plan that was adopted. So, we are, um, starting to work on collecting the information and, um, expect to have a capital improvement plan to you, um, consistent with the budget and the master plan requirements. Um, I think, I, I can't, I don't have it in front of me right now, and Jeffrey, maybe you can speak to this, but, um, according to the timeline that was last developed, I think it is, we are supposed to have all the information we need from the departments by the end of December, and then we will be bringing it to Planning Commission for approval.
Yeah, I think the timeline calls for it to, we should have everything back, uh, end of December, get it written and out the end of January or the beginning of February to Planning Commission. I think that was the time. But I'm not, I'm on my laptop and not in the system, so I can't bring it up in front of me.
That is my recol-, that is my recollection too, so that we have it ready to be adopted, uh, by the Planning Commission first and then presented with the budget to City Council.
So, you said, come for the Planning Commission probably in February for adoption?
Um, I, I believe, I believe so. I think the end of January, um, is when it is, um, I'm sorry, I do not have it in front of me either, but the end of January is when it's supposed to be finalized. Um, and then presented to Planning Commission in February for adoption with the budget. I think it's the first meeting in March.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that is moving forward as well.
Very good. Um. Status of staffing Suzanne, and also they had on his status of the master plan update, status of the master plan update.
So, staffing is, um, I think no changes from the last meeting. Jeffrey is on board and is diving in and getting, um, he's got a workload, uh, that's, that's pretty intense, but, um, you know, he's, he's really kind of, uh, he's really taken the bull by the horn on a lot of activities, and so the master plan, I'm sorry, the capital improvement plan, um, and the zoning code are two big priorities for him, but otherwise, no updates. I think, um, the planner, the, the planner won the backfill position for, um, for Bill's position has not been posted yet, but HR is working on a number of positions for planning and development, and so I expect to see that posted any day. And then, once that position is hired, we will be fully staffed in planning. Um. Then the master plan update, that was something that I requested. I really just have a question for you. That's also on our agenda. We've talked about this several times, um, but most recently, we've talked about what that, what that looks like in terms of the process for, um, for that to move forward, and I just want to be clear from the Planning Commission's perspective, because we would really like to pursue that. I know we're overdue by two years on that. It was supposed to be done in 2018. Um, and so I, I think we have an opportunity now. Um, there are several things that I've talked to Jeffrey about. Um, in terms of a focus on what that update might look like, particularly focusing really on five areas, looking at um, housing, looking at economic development. At the time the master plan was developed, we did not have an economic development department or staff, um, at the city of Flint, and we do now, and we work closely with them, and I think that there's some benefit to looking at that chapter, um, as far as a priority, um, for economic development. We've talked about um, public safety, I'm sorry, public health, uh, particularly related to the water crisis, because we do not have, um, the water crisis obviously had not happened at the time the master plan was developed. So, that's another area that we wanted, and these are, these are just ideas. I really want to take some direction from you guys on, on what your thoughts are on this, but the other two areas would be, um, um, more of a lens, given some of the things that have happened in our state and in our nation, um, just related to racial equity, um, and racial healing, um, and because social equity is one of the guiding principles of the master plan, taking another look at, um, where we can do a deeper dive into, um, into racial healing. There's a number of things that are occurring citywide right now, and just want to make sure that those are incorporated, and they are certainly addressed in the master plan, but going a little bit deeper into that. And then the fifth area is just given the things that our, um, our nation is facing, um, just related to climate change and environmental concerns. Um, looking at sustainability again, and, and again, taking a deeper dive into those. So, those are five areas that I've thought about that made sense to me in terms of, um, you know, presenting an update, but what I wanted to, A, is, um, get a sense from you on whether you thought those areas made sense to you, if you had other thoughts, and then specifically the process. Is it something that we just need to prepare and present to you? Or is there, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't know the answer to this, so I'm looking for your guidance on this. Or is it something that, um, you know, you will present to us, areas that you would like to see updated? I just need a little bit of direction, and then we do want to include, that's on our plate too, to move this forward and get this work done too. So, um, looking for some feedback from you.
Does anyone from the commission have any comments right off the, right off the top of their head at this time?
Uh, this is Commissioner Ju-, this is Commissioner Jewel. Um, can you hear me? I've been having problems with being muted and unmuted.
I can hear you fine.
Okay, all right. Uh, first off, Suzanne, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think the areas you talked about are excellent areas. A couple of thoughts, um, first off, I think it would be ideal to maybe add your monthly Planning Commission Leadership Staff Meeting, put that on your agenda and kind of highlight a couple of the key items. Uh, number two, we, there is, my understanding, there is a process for review and update regarding master plans, so we might want to pull that out. Um, one of the, number three, several years ago, we put together an informal review committee to take a look at the master plan, and that was kind of put on hold because the zoning ordinance is an integral part of that process. Um, so that's something else that may need to be discussed. And then I think the third part that we might want to take a look at is sort of, uh, similar to what we did with our bylaws resolutions, and that is maybe pull together a small core committee and take a look at how we move forwards, but I think you're, uh, right on target Suzanne is what makes sense, what's the best process and so forth. So, those are just some thoughts and ideas.
I appreciate all of those. Those are excellent suggestions and, um, and definitely, uh, I guess just a follow-up question to that, to the commission. Would you, would you, because I, I know that that's part of the reason the update has been on hold, because the zoning code wasn't adopted. Is that something that you would prefer to wait, understanding that we're looking, I don't know how long, you know, I can't predict how long it will take the council to, um, act on the zoning code. I'm hoping, I mean, we are really trying to get them to adopt the draft zoning code, and then if they have amendments that they feel need to be made, that they can make them after the, so that we can get, you know, a current zoning code. That's our goal. We don't obviously have control over Flint City Council, but that is, that's how we're going to be presenting it, and I'm hopeful that we can move it forward, but if it doesn't happen that way, what would be the preference of this body related to the master plan update? Because we would like to start working on it. Um. Do you, do you, would you prefer to wait until the zoning code is adopted, or can we move forward on this?
Uh, Suzanne, this is Commissioner Jewel again. Uh, I think you're making an excellent point. I would still recommend that we begin taking a look at how to organize. I'd recommend to go back and pull out the requirements for compliance of the master plan, and since the zoning ordinance is an integral part, there may need to be a discussion with the city council leadership that the city may be out of compliance with its master plan, because we're not addressing X, Y, and Z, and we need to address those to move forward. Um, so I think if we collect all that information rather than us waiting, um, because if you remember the master plan process, it, the Planning Commission is tasked with organizing, putting that together, and recommending that to City Council. It's the City Council's role and responsibility, uh, regarding the master plan. Not, not the creation and development of it, but, but the acceptance and the approval of it. So, I would, I would reinforce that effort. So, in some ways, Suzanne, I, I kind of see it as an additional support for you and your work of saying, the city has a master plan, here are the state guidelines and the required criteria. An integral part or a component of that is the draft ordinance, in regards to being able to fulfill our land use requirements. We are out of compliance in these variety of areas. For us to move forward, we need this, this, and this. So, those are just some additional thoughts. Uh. Does that make sense, Suzanne?
Yes, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Jordan, and I would, um, echo that I think, I believe it was MSU Extension had a checklist.
Right.
Community success, are they ready for a master plan review? So, I, I think it makes absolute sense to pull that out again. Um, and the next monthly meeting, um, to huddle us for December 4th, so maybe that's something that we could plan to spend a chunk, chunk of time taking a look at there, just to see where we're at. Um, in addition to the, what the, Jewel talked about, um, a couple of thoughts. I, I believe it was in the previous city charter, and I, I think it exists in the current charter as well, though I'd have to go back and look it up. But there, there had been a provision to engage the mayor and council that they had an opportunity on an annual basis to suggest any, any items of amendment or update for the master plan for the Planning Commission to consider. In the year, on the commission, we've never received any suggestions from council or the mayor. But, um, that would be one avenue of incorporating any specific feedback that administration wanted to put before us, or that council wanted to put before us. Um, I, I agree that the zoning code is an important piece of adoption, and that's why we didn't take any sort of five-year review of the master plan. Um, so to the extent that we can still exert some pressure to get that completed, I think that's helpful, because it's very difficult to look at the land use chapter of the master plan until zoning is actually adopted. I, I would say that's, that chapter is pretty much, we can't do anything with that until we have zoning. Um, in terms of the other chapters you highlighted though, you know, certainly around health or social equity, or, or, you know, those are all important things. Um, community engagement was also a pillar of the master plan, and I know that when we did the master plan, had significant resources from HUD and other funders to enable us to do a really robust engagement. Um, both because of the current pandemic and the lack of those resources, I wouldn't expect that we're able to do outreach and engagement in the same way. Um, but I think in some, some part of our approach has to be having some engagement with communities. They could be saying, okay, here's, you know, the 15 things that we think we need to update and adjust. Um, you know, what's your critique of that? Are there things we're missing? Are, are there things that should be prioritized differently? There's got to still be some way of doing community involvement, so that we can be sure to, to continue to honor that promise that we made.
I appreciate those comments too, and I a hundred percent agree with the community engagement piece. I did not mention that. I, I feel like that's a, um, that's a foregone conclusion. The work that I think planning is doing right now is centered around community engagement and outreach, and so I, I would absolutely not do it another way. I think, I, I agree with you that we do not have the resources that we did, um, you know, back in 2013, but we have, um, we've done significant and continue significant community outreach efforts, and I, I, I would anticipate that that would be a significant part of this too. So, your comments are noted and appreciated, and, um, and I agree with all of them. So, those are very helpful, and I'll look at the charter, and I will look at the MSU checklist, and, um, we'll have some conversations. Just to add to that, we have had informal conversations with the, both the previous and the current administration about the, the areas that I, I just mentioned, and, um, informally, um, they are in support of that, so maybe we need to formalize that a little bit more, just in terms of presenting something to Planning Commission, understanding that that's not, um, that we need to go through a community outreach process, and, and we will. Um, but those are, those are very helpful, both of, from both of you. I appreciate that.
Um, before we go into further, I just need, Jeff, what's your contact information? Phone number or something?
Uh, right now, I'm using my personal phone. It's, uh, 216-244-6150.
You don't have an office down there yet?
I do have an office, but I'm working remotely.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel. Um, I, I think, uh, I know at our last meeting, we talked about, uh, a one or two slight paragraph be put together regarding Jeffrey and Bill's background and role of focus to help us and to get some insight. That might be helpful in being put together, as well as relevant contact information for them, both email and phone number, and that then can be sent out to us.
I can, I can do that for sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, while we're talking about contact information, Cory, what's your contact information down there? Uh, do I?
Uh, you can reach me by phone at 248-915-5505.
And for, for both, um, for both Cory and Jeff, they also are available and reachable by email, and Cory is C. Christensen.
Yep.
Cory, I'm sorry, but I think it's, it's, oh, God.
Yeah, I can type it in the chat.
Just, hey.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, it works better if you just send me an email.
Okay, it should be in the chat for everyone to see.
In the chat.
Yep. Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Jewel again. Uh, again, I think that would be helpful. We can just add Cory's contact information to that email. And I know they'll probably get that out by the beginning of next week.
248-915.
Um, maybe the end of next week, Mr. Jewel, Commissioner Jewel.
Well, well, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, as I know, we're sharing information right now, it's, which is taking only a few minutes, and I know the staff will be doing an outstanding job of just sitting down, taking five minutes, putting that contact information together and sending it out.
Yeah, contact information for sure. I'm just talking about the, um, you know, the half-page or the, the brief, you know, kind of outline of duties and stuff. I would say that would be closer to the end of next week, just because we have some a short week this week and additional priorities at the beginning of next week, but contact information I can get out to you tomorrow.
Okay, understandable.
Um. Okay, thanks Suzanne for everything. Uh, resolutions, do we have any?
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson. I don't believe we have any resolutions.
Oh. Okay. Uh, old business status of the Planning Commission membership roster.
Suzanne? I did, I did have a conversation with Janelle, and she gave me verbally, we had a, a virtual meeting. She gave me verbally all of the expiration dates of the, uh, commissioners for all of the boards, uh, Planning Commission. I know that's what you're concerned with, but also ZBA and HDC, so I'm updating those membership rosters, and we'll have those to you tomorrow. Um, she is working on locating the, um, the, the actual resolutions. She has, they- She has, they have a, you know, they have a spreadsheet that I, that identifies the expiration dates. I think they're a little bit different than, um, than what we had talked about, but I will have the, I will have yours to you tomorrow. And it is the current dates and then she is working on finding the resolutions. And those will be part of the packets that, um, I, I'm sorry, of the binders that we are looking to have to you in January. The resolutions for each of you will be in your binders, but I do have the updated expiration dates for all of you now.
Okay. Planic, Planic and Mission orientation packet, we have still working on that?
Yep, I think Cory said at the last meeting that that is something they're, they're prioritizing and they will have available to you, um, in January.
Okay. All right. The I-475 project, you know, I was out of town last, well, out of the state last week. And Suzanne, did you have any further conversation with, uh, Brian Larkin?
Um, I did, but we couldn't schedule anything. You were available Thursday or Friday and we didn't have, um, we didn't have available, joint availability for he and I and, and you. So, um, given this week is short, um, putting it back on the radar to try and schedule for something, uh, next week. I don't have any further information in terms of updates on it, but just scheduling that meeting that's going to happen next week. And so if I could get some avail-, additional availability from you, then I'll work with Brian to schedule that.
Next week looked pretty good for me. Just give me a date, time. I think I can work it into my schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, he's still open to that.
Very good. That's all for, any new business?
Um, Commissioner Wesley, Chairman Wesley, I have one, one piece of new business, um, related to the Parks Plan. And this is something that we are also working on. It's great having a lead planner on staff again. And also having a Parks Planner. So we have revisited the Parks Plan that was, the draft Parks Plan that was prepared and is ready to go, uh, well, we're getting ready to move it to council for adoption. We wanted, I wanted to also ask this question related to you, just in terms of what has happened with the Parks Plan. And if, if the Planning Commission also, it is a component of the master plan in addition to making funding available for the city to apply for additional resources from the Department of Natural Resources. But is this something that, I, I honestly don't know if this is something that has come before you already? If you have received the plan, reviewed it, have had, you know, any, any citizen input on it? We are, um, looking at scheduling that also for, um, most likely January, um, getting that moving forward too. So what has been your interaction related to the Parks Plan?
Are you talking to me?
Um, yeah, to you, to you and all the commissioners.
Oh.
Has it, has it been presented to you?
Yeah. This is, this is Commissioner Jewell. I do remember, but the years go back, that there was a, I'm going to just use the term an informational presentation regarding the Parks Plan. And I think we provided comment and input per se.
Okay.
I think, I, I don't think we have, if the question is whether we've sent anything out, the Parks Plan that's being developed now, for me, the answer would be no.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall anything.
Okay, well, that is something that we will be bringing to you as well for your review and comment. And, um, we will be moving that, uh, forward after Planning Commission sees it, um, to City Council for adoption as well.
Okay.
And it, it, it is done. It is complete. There are some minor edits that are being made right now. As you know, we had a transition in our Parks Department as well. So, um, Roy Lash is our new Parks Planner and he has been, um, he's been reviewing it. Jeffrey has reviewed it. I'm reviewing it and there's some minor edits that need to be made and it will be brought to you very shortly.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
Well, that's it from me.
And that's, that's the new business. So I think that's all that we have. And Cheryl entertained a motion for adjournment. And before we adjourn, I'd like to make sure everybody have a very safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I, 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 I haven't gotten the motion yet though. Give me a motion for adjournment. I think that was Commissioners.
I'll second the motion.
You made it in a second or two?
Why not?
Campbell made the motion.
Okay. Okay, Campbell made the motion and Sorensen supported it.
Yeah.
Hey, thanks everybody and have a great holiday.